We call this meeting back to order now at twelve fifteen ish. First item on the agenda, consideration of possible action on hiring personnel. Dr. Rock, do you have any recommendations?
Yes, I'd like to recommend that we hire the below personnel on a one-year probationary certified teacher contract, pending release from her contract, Michelle Roberts, for the Perryton Junior High Life Skills Teacher Position.
So moving to seconded to hire as recommended. Any additional discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries five zero. Next item, deliberation and possible action on a guaranteed maximum price amendment, which we have within, I am assuming. I'm going to get very quickly into too deep a water for me, which is going to be our spreadsheet that we have here. Alan or the Huesmans have comments on exactly what we're voting on here by approving this now versus approving it post-January one?
Basically, this is approving the amount of ESSER money that we have allotted to spend on the HVAC project throughout the district. That includes some of the district HVAC, the Ranger Gym, and the Windows at campus. Leading to vote on accepting this this amount of money here, that this total, to be able to move forward because we're understanding that as of January first, somewhere right near the first of the year, there's supposed to be like a twenty percent price increase on equipment throughout the industry.
Locking it in, potentially a twenty percent savings by doing it today. Locking in what we were planning to do all along. Now we've just reached this point of this is the next logical step in the process.
That's correct.
The second part is the football line, right?
That's, that's who will be our next item. We'll talk about that here. Yeah, this is just the ESSER funds on this page.
And we just want to bring your attention to the top two figures. The, the first one is with contingency and then the second one is without contingency.
We need to make a decision within our motion to choose one or the other.
Yeah, and there's, the first page is without the admin included. And the second page, second set of pricing is with the admin included.
I think we only have one page.
It should be two.
I do have a second page.
The one we received, I don't think has the admin included.
Sorry?
The one we received, I don't believe has the admin included.
Look at the amounts at the top. The amounts at the top are different. They do look the same. The amounts are different at the top.
They look the same, but they're not. And it basically is, you know, just trying to get in with that, that budget limit that we're set at.
So tell us the difference in the two pages, please, again.
The one point seven five one eight two one on the first page is with your thirty-five thousand dollar contingency added. It's the other figure is without it. The second page is the admin building is included in that. Having the HVAC changed out, the first page does not have the admin building included. We had to cut some of the campuses that I think ended up being Top of Texas and Admin is what we're looking at. And the five HVAC units on top of the Autotumon at High School are R-22 units, but they're the, they're about ten, eleven years old now, so they're the newest of the old R-22 units. So those were cut out trying to get down to this figure.
You feel comfortable with this, I guess, or you wouldn't have brought it in here?
Yeah, I mean, it's, it is what it is.
And Brittany, you've looked over all these?
Yes, sir.
Would your recommendation, Alan, be to include or not include the admin building? Because the units above our heads, are they?
None. And that's, that's kind of the reason, you know, we looked at the Top of Texas building. Those, those are not going to be, you know, that hard to replace. We're not going to have to have a crane and have all those kinds of things to do those, so. That's the reason we kind of looked at the units that were going to be more in our wheelhouse to be able to do, you know, it's just our small crew doing them, so.
So things we would be able to do later on our own if we needed it?
I mean, we was hoping to be able to get them on, but the, just wasn't the funds there at the end to do it.
But we've taken care of our most important, triaged our most important to the top of the list.
I mean, if you're looking, you know, if we're looking at the contingency with the admin, we're at one, seven, eight, three. And I think our total budget number was one, seven, five, two, two forty-six. So I mean, it's just barely over.
So the only difference is that one unit?
There's actually, there's actually five units here.
Well, sorry, that was a line item.
One facility, one building.
Like I said, that does not, you know, that's Top of Texas will not be in this. And the, none of the high school main units and the Autotumon. It'll just, the only thing at the high school will be done on this is the Ranger Gym.
And remind me why the Ranger Gym is so expensive? Is that because of engineering piece of that?
Well, it all, you know, had to be engineered, every bit of it, due to state laws. Maybe spending over eight thousand dollars to have it engineered. But that equipment just didn't get any cheaper. It's not going to. I mean, I don't know if y'all remember when you first kind of started talking about this. There was a figure thrown out there, you know, several years ago that was not an engineered figure. But we knew then, even at that time, we wasn't going to be able to get in there for that.
I think the initial discussion was somewhere around two and a quarter, and we about fell out of our chairs. Now we're going to look down here and go, yeah, okay, it is what it is. So I guess our decision as a board here to move forward is what our feelings are on, on replacing the units here on the admin building. About a, what is the difference between the top end on both of these? Yeah, it's not a tremendous amount. Thirty, thirty-two thousand dollars or something like that. On the difference, so. Personal opinion? Seven point one percent inflation? Yeah, do we lock in something that's going to last us for the next twenty years at two thousand and twenty-two prices? Or do we look to replace them in three or four years at twenty-five percent higher prices? If we've got the funds, this is, we're still within a hair's width of where our total number is, even if we do the whole project. Would you say an extra? Our total number on the project is like a million, seven fifty-eight, something like that?
Our total budget was one million, seven hundred and fifty-two thousand, two hundred.
Right, we're at that lower number. And Alan's saying that he doesn't think we need. If I, if I got that right, if I read it right, you're saying that these?
The admin building?
The admin building here.
Well, they're going to need, they're all old R-22 equipment. They're going to need change. I'm just saying, if y'all decide you do not want to put in the little extra to do it, then we can do it. But it's, it's probably going to be as higher, at higher prices on equipment as we go.
So you're going to give us your recommendation on which way to go here?
No, that's your job. I'm giving you the information.
It'll require a budget amendment either way. Or if we do the admin building?
Because other one would be, would be just other?
Yeah, we'd be adding some budget. And it's there or not?
Uh, no, I'll have to do a budget amendment.
You know, I agree with you, Wes. Unfortunately, you know, number C here that we're fixing to look at is another, it's just money, right?
How do we spend those dollars efficiently? Which is why there's seven of us. Seven different ideas, or today, five different ideas of where we, where we are and come to, come to consensus by the end of the day.
With the, for sure, twenty percent increase in equipment, I just.
Well, you can't say for sure. Might be a twenty percent decrease.
After that, yes.
They're saying, they're thinking that's what it is, but they don't. It might be an increase.
That's, that's just what we're being told by the.
Anybody in the industry?
Suppliers.
By the suppliers.
They're also the ones selling stuff.
And they're, well, it's, it comes down the chain to them. They've been told to expect an increase, so that they're passing it to the, to their contractor.
Farmers, farmers, the same thing.
But I'm just saying, we can do that part in-house if you decide to hold off on that.
Is there any change in technology coming that would change what you would do in a few years that make it cheaper, anything like that?
Uh, probably not. I mean, honestly, the, you know, the government's the one that sets us here ratings on all that stuff, so all their, all the equipment has to meet cer- cer- certain standards as a bottom line, and the manufacturers have higher steer ratings from there, hoping for more money. It depends on how much you want to spend.
It would be a lot easier to decide if we didn't have to do stadium lights also.
True.
They're two separate decisions, but it's money. It's still money.
I make a motion to go with the bid that does not include the admin office and stay within our budget that we had along.
With or without contingency?
With.
Contingency.
Contingency.
Sorry.
Yes, sir. I think, if I can interject a little more, I, I do think you need to leave the contingency in there for the purpose of, it's kind of been broke out that the control system, which is Johnson and Contact, are no longer going to be part of the contractors' issue because of the absorbent prices Johnson controlled and they'll throw it out there. Basically, we've kind of, Greg kind of put some figures in there, percentages of what those figures were per campus. So I'm going to contact Johnson Control and Contact and tell them exactly what we need, not what they want to give us. And try to get all that boiled down per thermostat that we got to have, we got to buy a thermostat for each one of these units we change out. And then they have to do some programming on their end to get from the old thermostat to the new. So there's a little hourly rate there. I say little, maybe a hundred and fifty bucks an hour, I don't know.
Yeah, I think that's portable, that contingency.
But it may be just to cover even some of that, because we don't know what is going to end up.
Yeah, you bet.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second? Okay, we have a motion. We have a second to write positive ac- you have actual wording on something, but I'm not going to say this right. There we go.
So the other thing that I need to bring your attention to is the AIA form. It's in draft form, so we'll have to complete this. Yes, that one right there. We'll have to complete this with what you decide to approve. We'll get that completed and fill that in.
Okay, so we move to the second. The board approved the guaranteed maximum price amendment, AIA Form A-133-2019, Exhibit A. The construction manager with Huesman Builders Incorporated for the district's twenty twenty-one, twenty-two facilities and approval projects in the amount and in substantially the form presented, and authorized the superintendent to finalize and execute amendment on the district's behalf. The choice chosen did not include the admin building. It did include the contingency. Any additional discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries five zero. Okay, next item, deliberation, possible action on an amendment to the existing agreement with Huesman Consulting Engineers LLC for the district's twenty twenty-one, twenty-two facilities and approval projects to provide additional services for replacement of the lighting at the football stadium. Go.
Okay, so looking at pros and cons, you have a handout, Techline versus local bids. So let's start with Techline. These are some of the pros and cons that we came up as a district. Joe, Joe Huesman, engineer, is qualified to do the work on an hourly basis. This would require one general contractor to oversee the project, one company, so there's no finger pointing if something goes wrong. And there's less likely the invalidation of any warranties. Techline is a professional and reputable business and does the scope of work on a consistent basis. And my understanding, Alan, correct me if I'm, if I'm wrong, but the work is warranted for ten years. Correct? Some of the cons, of course, not going local. My understanding for Mr. Morales is that Huesman is recommending going with Techline. And Mr. Morales also recommends going with one company, and Alan and Coach Hab also support this recommendation. So looking at the backside, taking the local bids, the pros is offering bids to local businesses. Cons, delay in starting the work. Specs need to be written and the board will need to vote on this. We must hire a construction manager to oversee the project and not just an engineer. So the cost will be more to hire both. It extends the timeline for the light projects. And with separate local businesses, some of the warranties could be invalidated. The warranty would be just the warranty from each one of them, and it would be around five years. Correct?
I think most of the lighting companies' suppliers are five years on their, on their fixtures.
So at the last board meeting, we did have a question about the timeline it would take being on an hourly basis going with Techline. So do we have that estimated amount of time?
Yeah, and then, thanks, thanks again for having us over here. And then I think the timeline for plan spec going out the, the bid would, would be longer. And then I think talking to Techline, kind of doing their live board option. They said a couple months would go. And then if we do the bid route, it would, it would be quite a bit longer than that. I still think football season would, would happen. And then, but it'd be, we'd have to be ambitious on getting all the paperwork moving as soon as it gets, y'all's doors and my doors and everybody that has to sign off on it. And then it'll be having meetings like this again. And it'd be similar to the Huesman stuff.
So from the time they pulled into town, what could we expect on that? Do you know? I mean, I know it's hard to answer because you're not them. But in a similar lighting project that you guys have maybe done, I mean, is that, are we talking a week deal, a month deal, a two-month deal? From the time they pull in, start taking our poles down, correcting them back? I mean, what do you see?
I would think from the time you actually start to get everything that's dropping, I'd say a month, between a month, two months. And get folded up and then get on the history of that. The Techline guys said a week, but I think that's.
Pretty ambitious.
That's way too ambitious, yeah.
And what's, do we have to shut down and kind of all traffic ground filled for safety reasons during that?
Anytime we get crane involved, we want it as low and boring as possible. And that would be, we're waiting on them quite a bit for that.
During that time? No stop and drains, no football? Or no trenches, no? Correct? So we'd have to do it during the summer anyway?
Which is what we're pointing at.
Yes.
It's going to be a June timeframe. At the earliest. There's, there's not a, there's not a way to do that other than that timeframe. Alan, this bid here from Techline that, so it's a quote date on that, eleven, seven, forty-five days. We're reaching the end of that.
Yes, sir.
It excludes power supply, going to at least to their initial starting point. Correct?
That's what it, that's what it says there. You know, I talked to that gentleman again, it's been probably ten days ago, something like that. And kind of nailed it down again. He said, it's, it's a turnkey job. He says, we got to hire local electricians to take care of that part of it, and that's what they do.
They will, will tie into our closest heavy-duty enough, enough amperage disconnect and make it happen from there.
That's what I'm understanding. He said, when they leave, we will be trained how to use it when they walk off the premises.
Because it just, that exclusion could be a fairly large number right there, including trenching and tie-ins and getting disconnects in the proper place.
Yeah, and this is, this is the main reason I called him, because I told him, I said, I see we're excluding this stuff in the beginning. I said, we're looking for turnkey jobs. He said, that's what you'll get.
Alan, I know that they gave engineered specs. Does it, have we given that to Huesman to make sure that they agree with?
Yes. But he just got it the other day.
Okay.
I mean, he hadn't had it before.
But, but has.
He does have it.
And he, and we have a sign, a denim for him to.
Yeah, no, I haven't.
Be paid for looking at it.
To that yet.
Yeah.
Joe, with a already pre-engineered, pre-set up, supposedly turnkey project, for your stamp of approval, I'm not looking for a bid number, look for just approximate, because that's a question that I've had both of my own and placed to me. What is the additional cost over what bid we would receive from, from Techline for, for you to put your engineering stamp on it and, and allow us to, to comply with, and I forget the name of the Texas law that needs to be changed?
Yeah, they pick a law, it's not just one law.
That's, we just want, they're our multiple, they're correct, they're correct.
Yeah. And so for, for my fees, what I would expect from that fee, take it with a grain of salt. And then give, give, give you a range. And really, I see it as my job will be in the filling the holes of what Techline would be doing with their engineered specs, and extra pole, created for wind and eyes and all that front stuff. And that would be, which shouldn't be a lot on the structural side or just the electrical coming in, and then maybe, maybe a little bit of supervision at the beginning, yeah. I'd, I'd say on the, the low side, which I think I'm trying to be conservative, would be ten thousand, and then it would be up to twenty-five, yeah. And that, that would may not be probably starting to raise in the morning. Something should be a little work at morning, things like that.
Thank you.
That's a number that we did have. That, you know, is this, is this a five, ten thousand dollar number, is it a hundred?
Yeah, it shouldn't be, I shouldn't have to design the whole pole. I should have those. I, I want that to come from probably those all the time. I had to stand multiple times.
Second similar question. If we were to, to contract with you to design the entire project, so we would have a apples-to-apples comparison on a set of plans to be able to, to let out for bid from whatever electrical slash construction slash whatever else is needed company or companies to be able to either band together or do it all their own if they have the capability within the same company. What, again, approximately, would something like that cost from a design standpoint?
And this wouldn't include superm- like a construction, like a construction.
Right, understanding that construction supervision would be over the top.
And that'd be doing plans and specs on, like the light pole, it would probably still come from the light pole manufacturer. And then there'd be discussions on lighting, foundation, and electrical coming in. That's, that's where I'd put on that higher side, I would think thirty, thirty thousand.
We knew there would be a difference, but again, didn't know how much of a difference. So thank you. That's informative for us as we, as we sit down and do our darnedest strategy how to keep this thing local, but.
What are your expenses involved? Fox, Cameron, on the, on your end of the deal, the cost on your end, we'll take just.
Well, just, like the equipment, we have to have a higher insurance coverage to rent the equipment. And that was, I think it was sixty-five hundred. And, and, but other than that, everything's pretty standard.
So you could do the whole project?
No. I could install the lighting, but the poles and the foundations for the pole cuts out of my scope, but.
But I guess what I'm saying is I think that the way that we had it was whoever, if we, if we go local with it, we'd have to hire somebody to oversee the project.
We do have to have a construction.
You have to have a construction manager that knows what every single thing needs to look like, so.
Another one of those state law requirements, just like the engineering overview of something that was already.
Engineered.
Put together, correct.
How hard is it to get lights from things?
Um, the ones I quoted were twenty-four weeks out.
And that was a while ago.
Yes.
Quite a while ago.
And prices on the farm?
Um, I think they're staying pretty much where they're at, but it's just they have to manufacture them, so.
My concern is the warranties. Addition to the cost, the warranties just kind of make me nervous.
And you got enough manpower, or, I think local person probably has enough manpower to handle it.
Yeah.
And that's, with my supplier, it would have been five years, and that includes labor for warranty. And that's them running twenty-four seven. Issue with them running too much.
Do we have a ballpark for what it would cost to hire a construction manager to oversee it?
Which percentage of the total project? Percent and a half, right? Percent and a half total project? Or six, one of those two numbers? And I'm taking that off of other ones I've seen. I don't, I do not know what the going rate is.
You're not speaking for anyone?
I'm still estimating here.
Yes.
Looking for a nod, but I didn't get a nod at a percent and a half.
Six percent. Six percent of.
And the addendum that we're looking at, potentially, let me just make sure everybody's all on the same page here, is to add to the existing contract that we have with Huesman Consulting Engineers. Just to add, checking out the super project and everything that we talked about earlier.
With Techline. This is for using Techline?
Yes, yes, and that's, it does not include
The other things?
Any other engineering capabilities or any, any other things. It's strictly with the Techline portion. Any other engineering capabilities or any, any other things, it's, it's strictly with the Techline portion. And keep in mind, that we've also not approved yet whether even a complete project with Techline or whomever we're looking at. Trying to work out in my head whether or not we have the cart for the horse, or if it matters. Which, which direction that we, that we do this, because we do not have on the agenda, so we don't have the ability to, to even approve this other project or approve another direction, but certainly welcome any, any additional discussion if anyone had.
Brittany, remind me where, where we talked about, where we would get this money from?
Okay, we have a hundred and seventy-five in capital projects right now.
Yeah.
Um, I, with the additional revenue from the CDs, I'm looking at about a hundred, additional hundred thousand, so that's except two seventy-five. And the rest will just have to be a budget amendment that hits five pounds.
We have a Techline number here?
Two eighty-five. Two eighty-five, one eighty. Just what's on, if you have.
I didn't give them that, I just gave that to you.
Okay, okay, two eighty-five, one eighty.
Okay, thank you. And other than the engineering.
Yeah.
That's the.
Or if we wanted to add that ten thousand dollar fancy option of being able to program and, and do stuff. So, engineering plus that potential option, that's the balance of the project.
Free fireworks for life.
Our rock and the hard spot here is that I really, really want to see what someone with a parent, a parent and address can do on this project, but how do I see?
It's going to cost.
What someone with a parent and address can do on this project without spending yeah, fifty, sixty, seventy thousand dollars per.
To find out.
To, to come up with the design to find out where we are.
On something that another is already designed somewhere else.
You know, I'd be anxious to see, and I know that, like Cameron said, you know, twenty-four weeks, and I don't know if you guys all use the same suppliers for those lights, I mean, I'm saying you guys, I'm saying every other, uh, electric company in town. You know, if they have a different outlet to get them before twenty-four weeks. Because if they can't, then I think it makes our decision.
True, although twenty-four is the deal killer.
No, twenty-four puts you into.
Twenty-four puts you in what, uh, first of June.
Yeah.
End of May, which is, we've got to be past the first of June before we can really get started on the project anyway.
But we're going to have to decide and do all the engineering and everything on the next month to get those lights over there.
Yes, yeah, it'd have to be done quickly.
And I would, I don't want to rush that being done correctly.
I like the ten-year warranty.
I like the ten-year warranty. We're all hung up and upset that we can't do it locally in a straightforward way, obviously, none of us look real happy about it. Were we just discussing, or do we need to?
We're just discussing now, but if, if the board's preference was to vote to
Move where?
To move forward with Huesman Consulting Engineers LLC to
Yeah.
Start to process Ts and D and Is on, on this project, then our next meeting.
That's.
Our next meeting would have this, to be able to vote on this.
I don't feel comfortable about voting on this today.
Letting on. This part? What would you like to see for the next meeting?
Well, you, you're saying that that right there is only if we go with Techline?
Yes.
We're not voting to go with Techline today.
Because if we don't, no, we're not, it's, that's.
Or go with either way, right.
Only this is what we have on the agenda for today. If we were to approve this piece of paper and someone jumped in if I say something wrong here, uh, then that allows Huesman Consulting Engineers to start looking at this to be able to make sure that it's what it says it is, and, and engineering-wise is correct, that everything they have in there is as they've stated. Then we would come back in our January meeting and approve.
So, or not approve.
Right. This project, and if we go in and we don't approve this project, we're out this money that, that went into.
Give me an idea on that, just to look over those and give us the yes or no, not coming up.
That was the ten to twenty-five.
Oh, I, okay, I thought that was if he, if we did it and he's up here filling in the.
No, that's.
No, that, no.
Just to look at it.
No, he said specs to be written, yeah, no, yeah, it was ten to twenty-five.
Right, and, and I get it, writing specs, but you're reviewing something here, I don't know if there's a difference there.
Ten to twenty, ten bottom end, twenty-five top end. Seventy, send it, seventy if we write it from scratch.
Between the two, I think.
And I, I think it's not just reviewing that, the, the ten would be on recording some electrical work to give back to the service.
Okay, well, that's what I thought, that's what I'm thinking, so, so I'm just saying, if you take this, we approved this today, you take this Techline deal and you highlight eight things in and send it back, that's not going to be ten thousand dollars, I hope.
Most, most of it, basically, it's site visits.
Okay, but we're not asking for any site visits on this deal, we're asking him to take that, review it, let us know if it looks okay or not, right?
It's a viable, correct option, I can say that.
We're not asking him to come back up here for anything on that, he can do that tonight from his house.
But, but not.
I'm not saying he's not going to charge, I'm saying, he's saying that for ten thousand, he's already built in some other stuff into that number, I think.
Right, some, some things that, some things that we potentially will need, but we don't know. When we talked to Alan about the excludes portion that's, that's on here, that says excludes supplying and installing main distribution panel breakers, contactors, and switching, installation, trenching, and connections of underground conduit, and wiring for each pole, permitting, bonding, prevailing wages, and applicable sales tax. That's a lot of electrical that's excluded and highlighted on here, that what he's telling you is.
Is covered.
Is covered, I would love to see that in writing.
Yeah, I agree.
Alan, do we know if Techline has all the equipment now?
Yes.
They do.
Or they did, unless they used it on another project between, now.
I don't know, seven or eight, ten to get it days ago when I talked to him.
He was good.
It is ending.
They have everything in the yard.
It sounds to me like we need to withhold it with us, if we don't decide to, we need to pick a direction, either spend the money to have it all drawn up to do local bids, or admit it doesn't seem reasonable to do that, and get what we currently have picked up. I don't think no action is really reasonable, if we do need to be going.
Make a motion.
So, I move that we.
It isn't working.
Yeah.
The motion would be.
Approve the amendment to the existing agreement.
I move that the board approve the amendment to the existing agreement with Huesman Consulting Engineers LLC for the district's twenty twenty-one, twenty-two facilities improvement projects in substantially the form presented to provide additional services for replacement of lights at the football stadium, and authorize the superintendent to finalize and execute the amendment on the district's behalf.
I still move.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Say again.
It's moved and seconded to what I said a minute ago, to approve the, the amendment as presented, any additional discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries three, two. That being the last item on the agenda, this meeting is adjourned.
Want to get bored, yeah?
Something.
Not when the, when the phones.
I know. How many calls did you guys wrecked it?
Uh, let me see. Six. Yep, six.